That you see? Yeah, I sound little. Pradhana Jaskunam, Parlok Mandan Maathanri, Parshudru Vana Deva. And in our name we will chant, Hetchenaum Kaliguna Deva. Vakdhanam Aginchi, Vakdhanam Maajivatamalo. Peripurnanga Neruvetche Advitya Sachyadeva Mixtothral. Miriyantaina Namadegana Devu, Shaashrutamana Premato. Momala Premustu Viduvakha Mayarala, Prupzipinchadhe Devu Gunndhikhestothral. Ma Prabhu Nuh, Priyarekshukunani Esukristuvaru, Achanutamaga Hetchinchuppanamalo. This Saayinkalam, Seonu Pradhana Mandramalo, Neepathasunidhatam Maokrinchi. Minamunaganapuchihetchinchadhanateno, Mirmaakaraninchundhikamixtothral. Idenam Ma Prabhu Denam, Ma Prabhu Punnurthanudaitirilechindhenam. Atmatono Sachyamtono Aaradinchadhenam. Atmanchanbhum Makumiruvadikhalam, Marayanigusthalallo Maruganugrinchundhikhestothral. Seonlo Gudaraaradhallo Mirshaayaipannaru. Attravatha Matanney Youth Meetinglo Gudaa, Midasun Januktrigarani, Mirwadukunandhikamixtothral. This Saayinkala Kudikaloguda Midasun Balapachhi, Wadukolasing Pradhistram. Tadjumalo Jaychandra Brotherkurkai, Pradhistram Thodigavunno Sahayinchem. Kudikochinvanbut Mixtothral, Inkavritaravalsnuarugunaru, Vanuguda Sakalanathieskunram. Paadi Paachalu, Waadkimunadivichmo Sahayinchem. StaniKuguni Das, Jan Samel Brotheranbatti, Sawadri, Bidalu, Sangavuluna Badjithgalina Sahodalu, Prilandanabattimixtothral. Ashwadakaranichaimu Thodigavunnu, Nissandhini Ma Kanugrinchi. Therabunakashyamalo, SamastamJargunchkuni, Miray Mahamaganaam. Prabhavalu Pandavalsing Pradhistu, MarlaThirigunidas, Januktrigarasa, Jaychandra. Rathi Pranukurkai, Mirisethaparchkolasing Pradhistram. Evadikhalam Aaradhalonemi, Avanasthal Kudikalawadukunandhikhestothral. This Saayinkala Kudikunuguda Ashwadakaraniches, Miray Mahamaganaam. Prabhavalu Pandavalsing Pradhistu, Esukristuvari, Parshudamana Navavana Memalastutistu, Atuvanantavedukunsunamatanri, Amen. Part Sankya Naalugu. This part, Prathulapathulapath Sankya Naalugu. Seonu Vasulara, Sakala Vakdhanamalu, Manavayen, Rani Prasad. Elisha, Jan Samuel Ring. Part Sankya Naalugu.
(Singing) Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Sakala Vaadhana Mulu Manavayen. Sakala Vaadhana Mulu Manavayen. Sagila Paniye Suniyara Dinchadamu. Sagila Paniye Suniyara Dinchadamu. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Devudu Devudu Tilpiyune Maanakudo. Denikidevudu Tilpiyune Maanakudo. Raanini Vasulu Gaamanalu Divincham. Raanini Vasulu Gaamanalu Divincham. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Santulu Veyum Kanakarya Mulanucheyum. Santulu Veyum Kanakarya Mulanucheyum. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Paachika Mola Chunu, Palichunu Mari Saru. Paachika Mola Chunu, Palichunu Mari Saru. Palichunu Rakshaanjura Puchetlu. Palichunu Rakshaanjura Puchetlu. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Raksharikada Varivarshamupil Saramuka. Sana Duni Thini Paati, Mana Kosanu. Sana Duni Thini Paati, Mana Kosanu. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Othu Daanyamu Tonindi Polu. Othu Daanyamu Tonindi Polu. Thoda Thailam RakshaRasamu Varu. Thoda Thailam RakshaRasamu Varu. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Posaru Gungali Chida Purugulu Pira Tal. Posaru Gungali Chida Purugulu Pira Tal. Naadshamu Chesina Bandanu MiKosanu. Naadshamu Chesina Bandanu MiKosanu. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. SarvaSharirula Paytana Atmanukosin. SarvaSharirula Paytana Atmanukosin. SarvaSharirula Bandanu MiKosanu. SarvaSharirula Bandanu MiKosanu. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Suyonu Vasulu Sihunu Saru. Suyonu Vasulu Sihunu Saru. Seeshamu Nilachi Vasamu Chethuru Prabhu. Seeshamu Nilachi Vasamu Chethuru Prabhu. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Adinamu Nayehova Namamunandu. Adinamu Nayehova Namamunandu. Radshu Varu RakshaNanunde Daru. Radshu Varu RakshaNanunde Daru. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara. Sakala Vaadhana Mulu Manavayen. Sakala Vaadhana Mulu Manavayen. Sagila Paniye Suniyara Dinchadamu. Sagila Paniye Suniyara Dinchadamu. Suyonu Vasulara, Suyonu Vasulara.
Part Sankya Yedu. This part, Prathulapathulapath Sankya Yedu. Namadegana Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Pallave Lechinelvad Pardukunam, Asamelo Mundugusargi, Malakurshan. Pallav, Madhavachinunichi, Kurshanpardukunam, Pallavmatro, Lechinelvad Pardukunam. Namadegana Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Mundusargandi.
Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Suthiki Patruda, Sotramneke Prabhuva. Suthiki Patruda, Sotramneke Prabhuva. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Pyadi Bhatalu Kaligina, Viduavu Nanennadu. Srema Yushoda Navachinina, Viduavu Nanennadu. Pyadi Bhatalu Kaligina, Viduavu Nanennadu. Srema Yushoda Navachinanu, Viduavu Nanennadu. Apada Kalamulo Nannu, Adarinchika Chedavu. Apada Kalamulo Nannu, Adarinchika Chedavu. Ennadu Viduavu, Ennadu Viduavu. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Naakalli Dandulu ViraChina, Viduavu Nanennadu. Bandhu Mitruulu Dvesinchina, Viduavu Nanennadu. Naakalli Dandulu ViraChina, Viduavu Nanennadu. Bandhu Mitruulu Dvesinchina, Viduavu Nanennadu. Shaspatamaina Premato, Nannu Preminchina Prabhu. Shaspatamaina Premato, Nannu Preminchina Prabhu. Viduvakha Krupachu Chedavu, Viduvakha Krupachu Chedavu. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Naakorakai Thirigivachchedavu, Anadagannu Viduavu. Naakorakai Thirigivachchedavu, Anadagannu Viduavu. Nenu Nitho Nunduchakai, Maiima Rajchamulo Chetchedavu. Nenu Nitho Nunduchakai, Maiima Rajchamulo Chetchedavu. Kajuka Chesedavu, Kajuka Chesedavu. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Suthiki Patruda, Sotramneke Prabhuva. Suthiki Patruda, Sotramneke Prabhuva. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo. Namadegina Deva, Ninnannedu Niratamo.
Bible Spakeethi, Bible Pallav Pardukunam, Yesanu Vakko Nichchamo Nilcham. Appallapardukunai Devan Waadkane Manav.
(Singing) Esuni Vakku Nityamo Nilch. Emi Mari Nallu Pollu Podu. Umyaka Shamu Gathinchinaanu, Maaraju Palgu Maaradu. Esuni Vakku Nityamo Nilch. Emi Mari Nallu Pollu Podu. Umyaka Shamu Gathinchinaanu, Maaraju Palgu Maaradu.
Devanikwaadkane Manav. We are so thankful unto God for this cool evening in the midst of hot summer.
Intha yandaveedu munde etratvatu vesavakalamalo, chakkati sallati saayinkalam pottuniddevu manukanugrenchinanduku devu kondhanal.
Knowing our condition, God has shown some grace.
Devu manekastithinirigi, manayadla, enakankaranikrupan jupinchad.
So, this evening, we are going to see something about the second coming of the Lord which I started in the youth meeting.
Nenney Youth Meetinglo Praramichinatvanti, Esukristu Prabhu Rando Rakadik Samanchinatvanti, konni vishyalu, yekudikalomanachodnainav.
One verse we are going to read are one or two verses.
Vagatrundu vachinal manunchadukunainav.
Ezekiel chapter thirty-six.
Ezekiel, muppayaravachyam.
Ezekiel chapter thirty-six.
Ezekiel, muppayaravachyam.
And verse twenty-four.
Ezekiel, muppayaru, yiruvanalga vachnam.
All of us together please.
Daichesandrangalichadukunam.
Thirty-six, twenty-four.
Ezekiel, muppayaravachyam, yiruvanalga vachnam, andrangalichadukunam. Neelo, annyajanalundi, mimunutodukuni, ayadeshamalundi samakurchi, misantadeshamaloni ki mimunorapinchadano.
Also verse thirty.
Muppayavachnangoda. Annyajanallo karuvunugurchinandinda, mirikanandukunindhatlu, chettlu falamalano, boomipantano, nenuvistarampa jeshadano.
Shall we pray?
Pradhana Jaskunam.
Father, we praise thee for the joy given unto us to gather in thy presence again this evening.
This Saayinkala Samelo marakasat, nisannidlo chediravudangi, mirmayadla chupinakrupanbattini, kentavandhanalushtothral chellistunam.
Lord, right from the morning, we thank thee for thy continued presence which we could enjoy.
Prabha, vadikala sameninch, edatagnatvanti, nisannidlo mayadla, unchim, miranubayinchanandinch, naankchesin, sahayinbattini, kondhanal.
Thank thee for being with us during the worship service and also during the youth meeting.
Yekka Aaradana Samelo, youth meetinglo, mirmatho undinanduku, meekondhanalu, Prabha.
Sacrificing their time, their money, their energy, their comforts, thy children with much expectation, they have entered into thy courts this evening.
This Saayinkala Samelo, nee prajalupprava, variyekka shaktini, variyekka dhanani, varikundetratvanti, sukasavkialni, varasamayani, Prabha, kachubetti, nee, nisannidiku, Prabha, ochi, neeninch, ento goppa gashistuni, sannidukochinav.
Thank thee for bringing thy servant, oh Lord, in spite of his busy schedule, our dear brother Joseph Benjamin, to this evening meeting.
This Saayinkalan Kudikoraku Prabha, nee dasud, Joseph Benjemanugari, antopanivatlikaligunnapadiki, nainan, draagaligunanduku, meekantavandhanal chellistunam.
Lord speak to us.
Prabha, matomatlan.
We are needy people.
Meemakkargaligun, prajalupprava.
Who can satisfy us.
Yavrumomal, samtrupthiparchgaligun.
We are looking unto thee with much desire and expectation.
Meemantoh, aashittoh, asektuthoh, neevayipimantostunam.
Thy still small voice may be heard by every one of us.
Maloprathivakar, nee melanayinatvanti, murtuvayinatvanti, swaranime, minunatlu, cheprava.
Something of eternal value we may receive from thy throne.
Nee parlok simhasanunich, nithyamayinatvanti, vilugaligundhikontam, meempundinatlu, sahayinch.
Unworthy as we are both of us, foolish people, we are standing before thy precious people.
Nee prasastamayinatvanti, prajalidhatvanti, nelvadinatvanti, meemirurom, Prabha, puttilenu, varma, yokeelvanuppikuntunam.
We are bringing all of us under the sprinkling of thy precious blood.
Momalandhar, nee, nee prasastamayinatvanti, rakta prakshnikindhikideskunam.
We are claiming thy never failing promises for this ministry.
Yeparicherekarako, ellapu, yippudu tapipunatvanti, nee vaadhanal, menchappadutunam.
We are expecting great things so large.
Oh Prabha, neenich, goppa sangatl, aashistunam.
Ascribing all glory unto thy holy name, we do pray in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
Nee mahmukaligunatvanti, naamanike, samastaganaam, mahmukprabhavalaropistu, maarakshakudinatvanti, Esukristu Prabhu, shaktikaligun, namamlo, nee pradhinchivadukuntunam, Tantri.
Amen.
Amen.
This afternoon, we were seeing that according to the divine calendar, the next immediate event is going to be the catching up of saints to the midair.
Yemadyanasaamal, youth camplo, youth meetinglo, manachustavachamo, daivika kalam, manamprakarun, taravathla, jarugavunatvanti, gatna entante, parshuddil, akashamaloni, konipobadita, madhyakashanki.
Everything what is happening on the earth is hundred percent under the control of heaven.
Yeboommedheyevate, jarutunay, nootikinoorishat, ivanneygoda, parlokam, yekka adhyanamaluntunay.
So, the next immediate event that is going to take place is that the believers, whether they are dead in Christ or whether they are living in Christ, they are going to be caught up to the midair, what we call as rapture.
Taravathla jarugavetratvanti, ventrenajarugave, gatna entante, krishtanandundi, murtulainatvanti, varugavachu, leeda, krishtanandundi, sajivalainatvanti, varugavachu, varu, madhyakashanki, kettabadthadu, dani, ettabadutantal.
And we have seen seven times in the book of Revelation, the Lord is making mention of his coming. I am going to come, I'll come quickly, behold I come, these words appear.
Pragatrankannalo, yedu sallu, yematamanachustavacham, idugonentvarugavachuchunam, idugonenavachuchunam, idugonenavachuchunam, yedu sallu, chepreduppravu, manachusam.
That shows the importance of his coming.
Adyanchupistnante, Prabhu, rakadaka, pramukkethukurinch, manakalejastan.
If some sentence finds place in the holy Bible even once, it is a great sentence.
Biblelo, yedainavakwaadkimuchodijaskunindante, raibadindante, yekka sari raibadindante, adyantogoppa sangatana, danartam.
And when same thing is repeated time and again.
Yekesangatli, padayapadayapadayapaday, chappabadutunte.
Undoubtedly, it is of great importance.
Nissandehingadi, ento, pramukkiamayasangati.
In the youth meeting, we were seeing, apapandagribetkunavu papa. I don't allow any child to move.
Avidanga, atyutukat, tiranikantidachesin.
So, seven times it is written.
Yedu sallu, raibadindi.
We have seen Revelation one-seven.
Pragatranamadhitadhyam, edavachinadusam.
Three-three.
Mudu-mudu.
Three-eleven.
Mudu-padikondu.
Sixteen-fifteen.
Palaharadhyam, padihanaavachinav.
Twenty-two-seven.
Yiruvayedu, yiruvairundu, yedu vachnam.
Twenty-two-twelve.
Yiruvairundu, pannindu.
And twenty-two-twenty.
Yiruvairundadhyam, yiravachinav.
Seven times.
Yedu, yedu sallu.
The Lord is reminding us that he is going to come quickly.
Ayatvarugavastunanani, yedu sallu, maniknyapkunjestunad.
But the important thing is.
Aite, pramukkiamayasangatindante.
In some of the verses he is writing, I am going to come as a thief.
Kunnavachinallem, nenudongavalevastanandrashedu.
And in some verses he is telling that every eye shall see me.
Inkok sandram, inkokagagriavraibadindante, prathinethramayinuchuchunani.
These two are contradicting phrases.
Yirundugoda, vakadan, kautu, etrekumayinatvanti, matal.
Because a thief will come when nobody is seeing.
Yavruchodinatvanti, samelo, dongavastad.
But what the Lord is telling?
Aite, Prabha, yenjaptanad.
I'll come as a thief.
Nenudongavalevastanu.
And on the other side, the other side of the coin, he is telling, every eye shall see me.
Inkokvayipunani, anikrundavayipusinatlate, prathinethramanuchuchinandraibadin.
What does it mean?
Danatmenti.
Is there any confusion in his statements?
Ayne, pragatranlo, yemena, kalavaramunda?
No, not at all.
Leenaleledu.
So, from this we have understood and as many Bible commentators say.
Neenich, manavartanjieskochu, anekamandhi, Bible, vaadkana, kartal, chepinavidanalo.
Yeah, the second coming of Lord Jesus Christ is going to be in two parts.
Esukristu Prabhu, Rando Rakadha, Rando Bagalga, undabothundhi.
One is, he is going to come as a thief.
Motromadhi, ayin, dongavalevastad.
And secondly, every eye shall see him.
Rundo vichatsusinatlate, prathinethramayinuchuchinav. Rundo edika chusinatlaiyate prathinethramayinuchuchunav.
And we all know and hundreds of messages we must have heard so far.
Manak bagadelsu intu varaku konni vandala vartamalal manam minuntam.
These two incidents of his second coming, these two parts of his second coming are separated by a span of seven years.
A rakadlo undetratvanti rando bagamalo yedu samsthalo nedu to vybaginchabadunay.
Now, we all know.
Manak delisikada antarki.
When a thief is coming, he will not give any signs.
Dungavachinapudu yevidamayatvanti sama charumgana gurthulagani chapadu.
When, in the most unexpected time, he will come.
Anukonatvanti gadiyalo dungavastad.
So he will not give any signs.
Aaya yevidamayatvanti gurthulusuchal.
So when the Lord is telling that about the signs of his coming.
Prabhu rakadugurthulayin chaptunapadu.
It is not about the coming as a thief.
Aaya dungavale vastadju du dan gurinchikaadi suchalani.
It is those signs are for the second part that is every eye shall see him.
Aaya rakadugurinchinatvanti gurthulanyu guda rando rakadlo rando bagamunjusara prathinethramayinuchuchunani dan gurinchapadu.
Now, when we see the international events, the things that are happening in various countries.
Verer deshalo jarutunatvanti antarjati varthal manachustavachinat.
And we have seen very clearly that the signs are being fulfilled at a rapid rate, at jet speed.
Y jarutunatvanti sangatlanentho saraveegunga entho veegunga duskpotu naa yisangatlanii.
What does it mean?
Danartam enti.
The second part of the second coming is very near.
Rundo rakadlo rando bagame chala dagarlo samiipangav.
When the second part of the second coming is so near, what about the first part?
Chodandi rando rakadlo rando bagame bau samiipanguunte, rando rakadlo madhitbagam inkantadagalavundal.
It is seven years before the second part.
Rando baganik yedu samsthalo mundedi.
So what does it mean?
Danartam enti.
Lord may come at any time.
Prabhu yesamelo nainarav.
And so many prophecies right from Genesis.
Adikandamunin chaneeka praavchnalu.
Even before the first coming of Lord Jesus Christ, as a babe in Bethlehem, the prophets of the world, they prophesied about the second coming of Christ.
Patinamalal undetratvanti pravaktalu Jesu Kristo Prabhu Bethlehem gramalu sisuga janmichedanikantemunde, Jesu Prabhu rando rakadugurinchinatvanti praavchnalu praavchinchad.
Before his first coming.
Aaya madhit rakadak mundey.
They talked about the second coming of Lord Jesus.
Jesu Kristo Prabhu rando rakadugurinchu var matladaru.
More than anything, more than any other signs.
Verer danikanteguda verer vati gurthulakanteguda.
The most important thing is what is happening in the land of Israel.
Mukkenga pramukkenga Israel deshamle yen jarutunda adi pramukkam.
About wars and about earthquakes, about famines, about pestilences, about all these pandemics, many people will talk because everybody knows about them.
Prathivakaraku matladtaru prathivakari delsi yekka karulugurinchu, bukampalugurinchu, yekka rogamulugurinchu, vipatalugurinchu, prakritu vaypratyal andarkates.
But especially, the country Israel is a compass to every believer.
Ayte Israel desham mukkenga prathivisvasikadi dikchuchilantidi.
What is happening in India is that much, it is not important.
India lo yen jarutunda adantapramukkamayas.
What is happening in America that is not that much important.
Amerikalayen jarutunda adantapramukkamayas.
When you keep the second coming of the Lord in view, what is happening in Israel is very important.
New Jesu Kristo Prabhu rando rakadnu madhilavunchikoni, nu chustai Israel lo yen jarutunda adi chala pramukkam.
Because that is going to be the world capital tomorrow.
Indikantadi rabayarozaloprapinchara rajdanagav.
It is in the center of the year.
Adi bhoomikin nattanadumundadi.
We all know how many continents are there in this world?
Y lokalo enni kandhalandai manak delisikada?
Seven.
Yedu kandhal.
Pragatranam ani sevena yedu kudassevena.
Pragatranam ani yedu ikkada gudhiyedu.
Ah, in examination, you write seven.
Meere parikshallo yedan raichu.
Actually, there are only three continents.
Ni jani jusse kavalam mudu kandale.
Ah, if you write three, you will get zero.
Mudu kandhalani meere parikshalraastamixunav.
In your examination, whatever the teacher says, you follow it.
Meere parikshallo meere yemrastaantam mee teacher lenjeptharu danne ansarinchrayandi.
So, as a matter of fact.
Ni jani kavmatla chapadu.
There are only three continents in the whole world.
Sarva lokalo jusse kavalam mudu mudu kandhalu.
Lord created Adam and everything was totally buried in the water during the days of Noah.
Devu adhamnavaan surinchadu tarvathla no kaalamlo jusse jalpranam anta gudamunipendhi.
And Noah got three sons.
Noah kumugurkumarlu.
We all know Shem, Ham and Japhet.
Shem, Ham, apedu manak telisav.
And through those three sons.
Var mugurkumarlu dhvara.
Three continents are established.
Mudu kandhalu stapinchabaddai.
Number one.
Motto maddi.
Shame.
Shame.
So the children of shame, they are scattered in our area that is, it is almost Asia.
Y shem yekka santathi varlamta chedrunnar manam undetratvanti Asia kandamlo.
Shame means.
Shame enti.
As we read in Genesis ten twenty-two.
Adikandam padavadham yiravirundavachinalo manachadunato.
About shame's children, it is written.
Shem yekka santathigurinchrayabadi.
So much of those children, they are scattered in that area which is called Asia today.
Shem yekka santathi chedrunnatvanti abu bagam adi Asia kandamgappilavadundi.
Ah, so in one way.
Vavmatla chapadu.
We are also from shame.
Manamandragu deyekka shem ninchachinavaru.
Ah, and here nee manak shame ledu.
And here manak shame ledu.
That shame is different than the shame.
Ah, shame eru yishemu.
Ah, okay, so, we may not be from Abraham, but we are from shame.
Manam Abraham nichkakpochkanu manam shem santathi shem ninchachinav.
Because Abraham is chosen by God.
Indikantabraham devan chedairparchakal.
But before Abraham, right from shame to Abraham, almost another ten generations are there.
Chodandi shem nichabraham varku marladaada paditharamalu.
Yeah, after shame, so arpakshad, then shalad, like that.
Shem arpakshadu tarvathla migilnatvanti var.
Ah, shalad.
Shalad.
Eber.
Eber.
Belik.
Belik.
Reyu.
Reyu.
Sheru.
Sheru.
Nahor.
Nahor.
Terra.
Terra.
Abraham. Ten generations are there.
Paditharamalu unnar.
So, probably through some other, some other person, Indians must have come.
Where?
Not through Abraham.
Abraham nichkagadani verer vektinichonichom man Indians manamacham.
Because Abraham is in the Middle East.
Indikantabraham madhyashakchendu.
He belongs to Mesopotamia that is a part in Iraq.
Iraq lo kubagamayatvanti Mesopotamiaakchendu.
Later, he shifted his residence to Canaan.
Tarvathla ayanakani vasani kananik marchad.
So, almost Asia is from shame.
Y Asia pramukkam, Asia pramukkam jusse shem nichachin.
And secondly, when we go to Africa, the other continent.
Tarvathla inkokakandam Africa kandanki manamelti.
They are almost the descendants of Ha.
Var Haam yekka santathi var.
African continent got another name.
Africa kandanki marakpeerundhi.
What is that?
Entadi?
Dark continent.
Chigat kandamadi.
Why it is dark continent?
Indu dani chigat kandamantar.
Because we all know, Haam has seen the nakedness of his father along with Khan and his son.
Tarvathla kumarudu togalisi yekka Haam yendesantti tantriyaka disamalan chustadu.
And instead of covering it.
Danne kapadani badalaga.
He has, I mean, told to everybody.
Adi andarki vachichapastad.
We all know the children of Haam.
Haam yekka santathi manam eridu.
In six, eight of Genesis, ten eight of Genesis.
Adikandam padavadham.
Ten six.
Adikandam padavadham aravachinamlo.
What is written there?
Yemraibadindaka.
The sons of Haam.
Haam yukumarlu.
And who is the first one?
Yavru madhitkumarudu.
Kush.
Kushu.
I told in the youth meeting, what is Kush?
Kush enti endi yavasal kodikala.
Not I told, but you also know it.
Neen japdunaga meeku deles.
Ah, what is Kush?
Enti Kush enti? Ethiopia.
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 Ethiopia of that day.
Ethiopia adenana Ethiopia.
Today Ethiopia is so small.
Yedanani Ethiopia chalachinadigandhi.
But Ethiopia of that day, the geography, it is a big country.
Adenana Ethiopia enti chala pethadesham baguvalikantjuste.
Ah, a camera dhorunga gujubetin, ala niddhalo dani dogiitar.
Kunchindu.
Go back. Ilgo. Kenno vikritadukun. Day and night matches. Don't tell of anybody near the camera because we have to be something. Evdoparayutkunachilavatukunadu damothumbay. So, Ethiopia in those days.
Adenalo Ethiopia enti.
Ethiopia.
Ethiopia.
Eritrea.
Eritrea.
Sudan.
Sudan.
South Sudan.
South Sudan.
It is a big area.
Chala pethadbu bagamadi.
So the first son is Kush.
Madhitkumarudu Kushu.
And second son.
Rundo kumarudu.
Misraim. What is Misraim?
Enti Misraimu?
Ah, Misraim means.
Misraim enti?
Ayio. Entu chakkaapadatar varmu newskundra.
Entu chakkaapadatar.
Nicherindi visvasulara yordanadini datanu vidichipet today.
Misraim.
Mar indu barthunatdu?
Indu barthunatdu?
Ayomayom.
Ayomayom.
Isn't it?
Avna kada.
Misraim means Egypt.
Misraim enti ayugut.
Misraim is the name of the forefather of Egypt, that is, from Haam's son Misraim, Egypt is there.
Ikka da Haam yekka kumarudanatvanti Misraim nichi yekka ayugut ochindi, ayugut yelam molapursudu molapitharudu yena Misraim.
That's why in Hindi Bible, it is written as Misri, Misri.
Hindi Bible lo Misri and raibantam ayugut.
In Telugu Bible, it is Egypt.
Ay, Telugu lema ayuguttant.
So Misraim.
Misraim.
So Egypt is also an African country.
Yekka Egypti guda Africa deshamay.
Then Phuth is there.
Tarvathla Phuthu.
And he is the third son of Haam.
Aya Haamu mudukumar.
He is the forefather of Libya.
Aya Libya ki pitharudu.
And some other nearby countries.
Danke chutupakalundetad samiipadeshal.
As I told you.
Neen chapinavidadanalo.
Today, one country means in those days, in those days, it is a big area.
Adenana vaka desham enti chala petha vayshalam galigun.
Later, they became small, small countries as we have divided Andhra and Telangana.
Andhra, Telangana vybaginchabandadu tarvachinachinadeshal.
Originally, they were very big countries.
Sahajingasusavi chala pethadesham.
So like this, Haam has gone, see the descendants of Haam are scattered in Africa.
Haam yekka santathi anta guda yekka Africa kandamaloch chedrunnar.
But why it is cursed?
Indu kadi seppinchabadindi.
Because of his fault.
Tanayekka tapidanabattin.
Till today.
Yedun varku.
There are wonderful natural resources are there in Africa.
Africa kandolipri var guda adbutamayatvanti sahaja varunalunay.
The gold in Ethiopia is the best gold in the world.
Ethiopia lo undetratvanti bangar meeli mainasreshthamayna bangar.
If you go to South Africa, Johannesburg, gold mines are there.
Iputu South Africa lo Johannesburg keelata akkada bangar gunalunay.
If you go to Botswana, many Indians, many Andras have gone, there is copper mines are there.
Botswana keelata Andhra ni chalamandelunara akkada rakigunalunay.
The best diamonds are there.
Reshtamayatvanti diamondsunay akkada.
If you go to Nigeria, oil is there.
Nigeria keelata akkada chamrunelvalunay.
And if you go to Congo, all the raw material to manufacture the electronic chips is available.
Electronic chips thayarjeshetratvanti yekka mudisarikanta Congo parisarpantallavundi.
Wonderful resources.
Adbutamayatvanti varunal.
Nature has given so many things to them.
Prakritu var kenno sangatrichindi.
Yet it is a dark continent.
Aya napadu guda chigat kandam.
The longest river Nile is also there in Africa.
Yentho padavayatvanti nadayatvanti Nile nadu guda Africa kandal.
Oh, it starts in Kenya and it joins Mediterranean in Egypt.
Ikka adi Kenya to praramamay ikka, Egypt lo adi samudrala garustundi.
Madhyadarah.
Madhyadarah samudrala.
It covers almost eleven African countries, such a long river.
Yentho padavayatvanti nadu daadaapu padukondu Africa deshalani.
With all these things.
Yvannay unna guda.
Yet.
Aya?
It is a dark continent.
Adi chigat kandame.
Evdena bakkodaganapaditavu afrika olagunat.
Yevdena bakkodaganapaditavu afrika odun.
Yedu somali olaguntra.
Yedu somayana nichachinadu.
Ethiopia untra.
Ethiopia nichachinadu. Endu ko?
Cursed by God.
Devan chetha seppinchabadindi.
Though they are having everything, they are not able to enjoy.
Var kani unna guda varni anubhayinchanandenchilaani.
Because the curse of God is there.
Devu yekka sapu var medundi.
Nova, Nova cursed there.
Nova varne seppinchad.
So brothers and sisters.
Southalara.
That is the second continent on the earth.
Adi bhoommedhundey rando kandam.
One is Asia.
Vagatam Asia.
The other is Africa.
Rundo dam Africa kandam.
The third one is.
Mudu di.
From Japhet.
Tarvathla yapetni.
That is Europe.
Adi Ayropanich.
Ah, so there are three continents.
Mukkenga jusse akkada mudu kandhalu.
That's why their appearances are also different.
Chodandi vatiyakaakaralu gudaman chustai.
Varyakaakara.
Varyakaakaralu manachustai verer kanpis.
By seeing an African, we can tell, achaapakaladu naan afrika odun.
Manajep. Afrika in manan justanay, aya manajaparsinav, manave juchepasni veda afrika odun.
Ah, he is an African.
He is an African vikti.
Similarly.
Adhey vidanalo.
He is an Asian.
Yena Asia chendu.
And he is a European.
Yena Ayropak chendu.
By seeing the faces, by seeing the personalities, because three are, three continents are from three different sons of Noah in a broader way.
Vakavidadanalo manav vishalanga chapadunkunte, Noah yekka mugurkumarlu, mugurkumarlu var yekka santathi, vaka kandam manam chapachu.
And all these three continents will meet in Israel.
Ee mood kandalu gora Israel lo galustai.
That's why Israel is the center of the earth.
Andike Israelu bhoomki kendra mo.
As we keep the table in the center of the congregation.
Manu ballani samajani madhelopetinattu.
The Lord has selected Israel, which is the center of the earth for his birth.
Yesu Kristu Prabhu thana jananunkaraku bhoom yekka kendra sthanamo, inet twenty, Israel ayinenchkunna.
Ah, he is equidistant to all people.
Ayin andarki sari samanu ladubhatla.
You may be an Asian, African or European.
Adi Africa viktena, Ayuropak viktena, eh, 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 Africa viktena, Ayuropak viktena, Asya viktena, evrenesare.
The Lord Jesus Christ is equidistant to all people.
Yesu Kristu Prabhu, andarki sari samanu ladubhatla unda vikti.
And some people will question.
Kantamadhi pressnisha.
How can we say that it is the center of the earth?
Yevidanga mir chappakaladu, adi bhoomki kendra mani.
No doubt, three continents are meeting.
Nissandehanga mood kandalu akkada galustuna.
Even, even the very name of the sea in that country.
Adesyalu unde etadhu Samudra yekka pair gora chusthe.
Mediterranean Sea.
Madhyadarra Samudra.
Madhyadarra enti?
Madhyadarra enti?
Madhyaplas dhara.
Madhyaplas dhara.
Ah, yesamashmo porankisamash. Ah, ah, but, ah.
Sandhi.
Thing is, ah, sandha, ah, okay, yes ondu.
Ah.
Ah, so, madhyaplas dhara.
Madhyaplas dhara.
Dhara means dharetri.
Dhara ente dharetri.
That is the earth.
Adi bhoomi.
Even the very name of the sea speaks that it is in the center of the earth.
Ah, Samudraam pair jepptundu, adi bhoomki nattanadma undiyani.
That is why in English Mediterranean, med terrain, that is middle of the terrain.
Ante yekka terrain madhelo, bhoomki madhelo undi, andraybadindi.
Ah, there are only three seas in Israel.
Israelu moodu, moodu Samudralu na.
Mediterranean Sea.
Madhyadarra Samudra.
Then Dead Sea.
Mritta Samudra mo.
And another is the Red Sea.
Tarvatiyara Samudra.
Ah, Galilee is not a sea, it is only a lake.
Galilee any Samudra kaadu, adok sarasant.
It is only thirteen kilometer, thirteen miles long and four miles wide, that's the.
Padmodu mile doorumo, nalugu mile vedalpuntu, padu untadi, nalugu mile vedalpuntadhan.
So it is a small lake like your Kulleru Lake like that.
Kulleru sarasant, adok sarasant.
It is not a river.
Adok nadi.
It is not, it is not a sea.
Adi Samudra kaadu.
That's why the other name for the Sea of Galilee is the Lake of Ganesha.
Ganesha sarasant, ah, yekka Galilee Samudra anikinko.
And it is having another name also, the Sea of Tiberias.
Eh, Tiberia Samudra manu gora antar.
All these three things are one only.
Ee moodu gora okay vakati.
Sea of Galilee, Sea of Tiberias or Lake of Ganesha.
Ganesha sarasanna, Galilee Samudra vannu, Tiberia Samudra una vakati.
Ah, eudena ochu mundu Galilee Samudra ankelana, tarvath Ganesha sarasuchu chandate, nammadu, adikrakulleru saraskelu ochu.
Evrenesare, mottavadu ochu, neng Galilee Samudra ankelana, tarvath Ganesha saraskelu anesant, eh, var namadu. Ah, ikkundu ne kulleru saraskelu chusuchu.
Ah, ah, adonkutunadu.
Adonkutunadu.
Ah, so, only three seas in, ah, ah, Israel.
Israelu kavala moodu, moodu Samudralu.
Red Sea.
Yara Samudra.
Mediterranean Sea.
Madhyadarra Samudra.
Dead Sea.
Mritta Samudra.
Easy to remember.
Chala surugurtu vedal.
Red, med and dead.
Red, med, dead.
That's the three seas.
Moodu Samudralu.
Yeah, so, thing is, the whole world or the central point is Israel.
Sarva lokani kendra sthanamo, ente Israel.
Now our people may question our students.
Ipudu idyarthu pressnicha.
What about South America, what about North America, what about Australia?
South America, North America, Australia, eat mat entani.
They are not continents in the beginning, they are English colonies.
Avi praramola kandalu kaadu, gani English var yekka colony la.
We all know England ruled the whole world.
Sarva lokani England paripalinchidu manu telusu.
They were only English colonies.
Avenni gora English colony laavi.
Ah, they are not continents in the beginning.
Avi praramola, avi kandalu kaadu.
So here when we see.
Ikkada manu justhe.
What the Lord is telling.
Ikkada yep jepptunadu Prabhu?
Yeah, just now we have read from Ezekiel thirty six chapter.
Ezekiel muppayaru adham, ipri manu chadukunaga.
We all know, though God has chosen the people of Israel.
Devu ne present, devu ne airpachkunapadiki.
Because of their continual rebellion.
Var yedatkeenatun thirubatun bati.
God has scattered them.
Var ne challa chedri jeshad.
Especially the greatest rebellion was their self-proclaimed judgment as it is written in Matthew twenty seven twenty five.
Matthaisu vartha yereyodu adham, yereyodu vachinalu, annitikanti ekkuvenatun thirubatindante, ayin raktham maamida, maapinalu meedani, var antar, var meedika var thirupidechukunna.
That is in Matthew twenty seven twenty five.
Matthaisu vartha yereyedu, yereyedu.
The blood of this man be upon our house and our children.
Ee manushun raktham maamida, maapinalu meedani, unnu na kakanar.
Then.
Sarvata.
They were scattered throughout the whole world.
Sarva lokani kavali challa chedri.
Gods own people, gods' special people are scattered throughout the whole world, they were not having even one inch of their own land.
Devu ne sonthu prazalu, devu yekka istamainatun, swaki mainatun prazalu, varik sonthu bhoomi, yekka angulungolakonda, prapanchamanta challa chedri.
But what the Lord said.
Ayite Prabhu yep jepptunadu.
Before my coming.
Nen rakada, narakada ikmundu.
Yeah, every prophet is writing.
Prati Pravaktarastha.
Isaiah wrote in Isaiah eleven eleven.
Asia Pravaktarastha, padukundu, padukundlo.
And Ezekiel wrote in Ezekiel chapter thirty six verse twenty four.
Ezekielu muppayaru, yereyalu, Ezekiel Pravaktarastha.
Jeremiah wrote in Jeremiah twenty seventh chapter verse three.
Jeremiah Pravakti yereyedu, mulla rastha.
And Amos wrote in Amos nine fourteen.
Amos, tumidi padnalu, Amos rastha.
I will gather my people from all the four corners of the earth unto their own land before my coming.
Bhoomi yekka naludikkununchi, na prazalannan, antu varni, narakada kantemundu, nen varni thirigirappistano, samukuristano.
That is what is happening.
Adi zarutu undi.
That is what has happened in nineteen forty eight.
Padthavala nalvayinu vudhu jarigindadi.
After eighteen hundred and seventy eight years of wandering in the whole world.
Sarva lokalu, padjinu, debayinu, samusralu, varavidanga sancharinjeshthiruthu una tarvata.
It's in seventy eighty, they are scattered.
Debby Christmas akon, debby lo varu challa chedri.
As I told you, Titus, the Roman emperor killed nearly eleven lakhs Israelites, especially Jews in Jerusalem.
Jerusalem lo mukyanga yudalni Israel ni, ayin padukundu lakshlamandhi Roma chakavat Titus thampichadu.
That's why the blood of the Jews was flowing in Jerusalem.
Andike, Jerusalem yekka yudal, yudal raktham yarlay parindi.
Eleven lakhs people.
Padukundu lakshlamandhi.
It is not an ordinary number.
Samanimani sankigada.
Destroyed the temple.
Deva la yen, national jesheshadu.
Ah, and scattered the Jews throughout the whole world.
Yudalunder gora sarva lokalu chedri paru.
Nobody can dream that they will gather together again.
Marlava luthirigi samukuruchu badataran, kanisun kalagodu, evru uhinchadu.
After eighteen and half centuries.
Padjinu, narasatabdhal tarvata.
When God's mysterious hand operated.
Devu yekka marmayukta mainatun chayi, panijayadum praramenchindi.
And.
Tarvata.
Israel got independence nineteen forty eight, May fifteen.
Me padihenna tari ku, padthavala nalvayinu vudhu, Israel ki swatindramachindi.
From that day onward.
Adenamunichi.
What the Lord Jesus Christ prophesied, the signs of his coming are being fulfilled at rapid rates.
Ento saravekanga Yesu Kristu Prabhu, rakadugurtu levaita cheppada, venne gora nervechabaddu una.
Afternoon for the young people I was sharing.
Madhyana samayala, evanasulthan, nampanchkuntavachal.
From Isaiah eleven eleven.
Asia padukundu, padukundunchi.
From which, which areas God is going to gather them again.
Varu varni malla yeh, pradeshali chiskranayinadu cheppanu.
What the Lord said?
Prabhu yevanadu.
Ah, on that day.
Adenamuna.
The remnant of my people.
Na prazallo, meeginadu, shesham.
I will gather them from Ashirya.
Nenu varna Ashiru lo nishtiskostano.
Now come on, young people, tell what is Ashirya?
Enta Ashirya ente?
Full Kantaistan bedu varis.
Kantaistan bedu varis.
Ah? Syria plus?
Syria plus?
Ah?
Part of Iraq.
Part of Iraq, that is Mesopotamia.
Mesopotamia.
The area between Tigris and Euphrates.
Euphrates or Tigris, nadlamadhelu undi bagam.
Ah, meeting madu devu ne erku, social lo pasai potta.
Social lo pasai.
So, Ashirya.
Ashuru.
And then Egypt.
Sarvata ayguptu.
Then from Patros.
Sarvata Patrosu.
And then from Kush.
Sarvata Kushu.
We told, we talked about all these things.
Ivitanidu gurinchim manu cheppunna.
So Ashirya is in Asia.
Ashirya, Asia la undi.
Because both Syria and Iraq are in Asia.
Syria, Iraq, rondugora Asia kandamaluna.
Secondly, Egypt is from Africa.
Tarvata ayguptu anta Africa lo.
Only Patros is also in Egypt, I have told.
Patros gora ayguptu lo undi, malla cheppanu.
That is the upper Egypt.
Adi Egyptu.
That is also Africa.
Adi gora Africa kandam.
And not only that.
Dan tarvata.
And fourthly, we have seen about Kush.
Tarvata nalgu, Kush gurinchusam.
Kush is also in Africa.
Kush gora Africa kandamaluna.
And then Elam.
Tarvata Elam.
What, what is Elam?
Enti Elam ente?
Elam is Iran.
Elam enti Iran.
That is Persians.
Persians.
That is in Asia.
Adi Asia la undi.
So what the Lord is telling?
Yen jepptunadu Prabhu?
After Elam.
Elam tarvata.
It is written about Shinar?
Shinar undi, you.
What is Shinar?
Shinar lo undi. Enti Shinar ente?
Ah, Shinar is Iraq.
Shinar ente Iraq.
Why?
Indikku?
Because when Akkan has stolen that garment.
Akkanavastraani dungulinchinappudu.
Gold and that garment.
Ayaka vastraani dungulinchinappudu.
Bangaro.
Bangaro, bangaro tapati vastra.
In Telugu Bible.
Telugu Bible lo.
Shinaru vastram.
Shinaru vastram andraybadu.
In English Bible.
English Bible lo.
Babylonian garment.
English lo Babylonian garment.
So what is Shinar?
Enti Shinar ente?
Babylon?
Babylon.
What is Babylon?
Yeah Babylon ente?
Iraq.
Iraq.
So Elam means Iran and Shinar means Iraq.
Elam enti Iranu, Shela, Shinar ente?
Shinar.
Shinar ente Iraq.
Ah, Shela indukurtu chindu. Ah, ah, Shina.
Shinar.
Ah, so, me, haadukuntunadu. Adi, so, ah, next.
Hamathu lo undi you.
Then Hamath.
Hamathu.
Hamath is also once again a fortress in Syria.
Syria lo unde etadhu, yekka kota asthalamadi.
Why I am telling all these things?
Indiki matlanimithu.
When you are reading the word of God, don't read the word of God blindly with understanding you have to read.
Devu ne vaakyanu mir chadu, edo goodiga mir chadukunda, artangali, artangjeskuntu, devu ne vaakyan.
If you do not know anything, ask some elderly people, they will tell you.
Mi keedan artangakunte, pethavaislo undu, var pethalakontamadhi, nadugandu miru.
If they do not know, they will go to the, again, much more elderly people.
Varik gori teleputinka, pethavaislo undu, var nadutaru.
Meaningless reading throughout your lifetime yields no fruit at all.
Ni jevutkano lo, artarayuthanga, nu chadutupati, eyevidamani, falavundan.
Yeah, gooddechelo baddetant.
Gooddechelo bannet.
There is no use at all.
Eyevidamun opiyakun lenel.
That's why I am telling the meaning of every, every word there.
Andike, akundde prati matka artanen jepptun.
Hamath is a fortress in Syria.
Syria lo unde etadhu, yekka kota asthalamadi.
See how beautifully Isaiah is writing.
Choodandi, enta ramyanga, Asia Pravaktarastha.
On that day.
Adenamuna.
On the day when he returns again the second time.
Ayin rando sari thirigo cheddu, na samayalo.
And my people who are remnant.
Na prazalu, thana shesham antadu.
I will gather them from Asia.
Asiaunchan thirigirappistano.
I will gather them from.
Aygu.
Africa.
Var ne Africa ninchithirigirappistano.
Then what about Europe?
Tarvata Ayuropam enti?
Again the question will come.
Tarvata pressnus.
That's why one more name is there.
Tarvata inkok pair gurundi.
Ah.
Samudra Dvapamalu lo undi you.
From the islands.
Sarva Samudra Dvapamalu.
Ah, the European countries are almost, ah, they are known as islands.
Ayuropakandalo unde etadhu, Deshalan enti, island antar.
Ah, why?
Indikku?
Ah, that's why.
Andike, mir choodandi.
Many countries, their names in Europe end with land.
Andike, Ayuropakandalo unde etadhu, anekka Deshalu pair lo landan etadhu, marthomukistadu.
England.
England.
Ireland.
Ireland.
Scotland.
Scotland.
Netherlands.
Netherlands.
Holland.
Holland.
Ah, Switzerland.
Switzerland.
Poland.
Poland.
Ending with land, land, land.
Chivrimata, land, land, land.
Many countries are like that.
Anekka Deshalat.
Why it is so?
Indikatun.
They are known as the islands.
Avenni gora Samudra Dvapamalu.
So what the Isaiah is telling?
Asia Pravakti yarastha.
From Europe also.
Ayuropakandamuninchu gora.
What God is telling through Isaiah?
Asia Pravakti var devu ne.
My people are scattered throughout the whole world, Asia, Africa and Europe, I will gather them unto their own land before I come.
Nen rakada, narakada kantemundu, gana prazal, Africa kandamalo, Asia kandamalo, Ayuropakandamalo, challa chedri, ayin, var antar, nen, thiri samukuristano.
See, Isaiah is writing these words twenty seven hundred years ago.
Rundu vala yedu vandala samusrala kritam, Asia Pravakti matal rastha.
Before Christ is seven hundred, seven fifty years on this side, another two thousand years.
Yesu Kristu Prabhu, Yesu, yemicham, yedu vandala, yedu vandala, labesamusralu, dan tarvati, yedokarundu vala samusral.
So much, almost twenty seven hundred, twenty eight hundred years ago, he is talking about the, that's why Bible is the word of God, it is not a cooked up story.
Rundu vala yedu vandu, rundu vala yedu vandu, samusrala kritam, Asia Pravakti sangatranne rasaadu, andike, Bible devu ne vaakyanu, midisatya mo, Bible lo raybanda sangatla, kakkam, katalgaadu, kalpital, kaneka.
Not only that.
Andamatrava.
What more he is writing?
Inkayam rastha.
Ah, from Samudra Dvapamalu undi you.
Samudra Dvapamalu undi you. Vidipinchirappinchutaku.
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 Ah.
Yehova.
Yehova.
Rundo maru.
Second time.
Rundo maru.
Ah.
Tanachayi chaachano.
What does it mean?
Dan artamanti?
What does it mean?
Dan artamanti?
Second time he is going to gather all the Israelites in Israel.
Israel prazalni, Israel Deshalani, rondo maru, thiri samukuristha, anartam.
Dan artamanti?
Dan artamanti?
Rundo maru, antanadu, modutmaru.
Rondo maru, anta modrisaravu, edo undalaga.
Then the first time is not there, there is no room for second time.
Madrisari lenappudu, rondo sari, ane, daikavakash.
So when is the first time all the Israelites gathered in Israel?
Ipudu mattumadu saraka, Israel prazal, Israel Deshalani, thirig, kudigachar.
Every word is very specific.
Prati mat gora chala, pratiakamendi.
When is the first time?
Ipudu madrisari.
We all know.
Manamandramer.
Under the leadership of Joshua, all the tribes came and possessed the land of Israel.
Yehoshua, naikathol, ani, gathramlo var ochi, Israel Deshalani swatindrinchkunna.
That is the first time they came.
Adi madrisari olachin.
After the Egyptian bondage.
Ayguptu bandakal.
Our wilderness wanderings.
Ay, yarani, yatraipent.
After the death of Moses.
Moshe maranichin tarvata.
Yes, under the leadership of Joshua, first time, all the Israelites came to Israel.
Eh, Moshe, Yehoshua, naikathol, Israelu, paridugathramlo, var andar gora, yekka Khanan Deshal, Israel Deshal, kvalo, ochar.
Now what Isaiah is telling?
Yen jepptunadu, Asia Pravakti?
Later they are scattered.
Tarvata varichalla chedri.
Second time they will come, is when the Lord stretches his hand.
Rundo sari, tan prazalni, sekranchen, koraku, thiskundarudan, koraku, Prabhu, tan chayi chaastadu.
For that everything is happening there.
Dan koraku samastamakadu jarutu.
In nineteen forty eight, only six to seven lakh Israelites are there in the land of Israel.
Israel Deshalu, padthavala nalvayinu, samusralu, arnunchel lakshlamandhi, Israel.
Today approximately hundred lakhs, that is one crore are there.
Ipudu jusnetle, ten, noor lakshla, dadapu kotti mandanar.
Another twenty five to thirty five lakhs are scattered still here and there.
Inkayereyedu ninchi, muppa lakshlamandhi, varik, ikkada ikkada, challa chedri.
Surely they are coming.
Var velvelvelgustu.
Even during the Russia and Ukraine, war thirty five thousand.
Russia, Ukraine, yeddol, muppayedu vala, mandhi, Israel ochesar.
God knows how to bring his people.
ओह नान्ना नान्ना डिगेस्ट
नान्ना डिगेस्ट
नेंदर उपयोग पे
नेंदर उपयोग पे
हाँ अप्रत्यक्ष एब्रोनी चान्नोचड़े एब्रोनी चान्नोचड़े गली गोटे
अप्रत्यक्ष एब्रोनी चान्नोचड़े गली गोटे
हाँ सर वात टूपने दीश मारे शेड
टूपने दीश मारे
हाँ पहच बढ़ी ना बंडी
बंडी पहच बढ़ी
Then I was praying in my heart
नाव राजनीय नान्ना प्रार्थना जैस्कुन्ना
ओह प्रभाव इधिए तो शाला महा योद्धा लगू
इधि महा योद्धा लगू
इधि आड़ कड़क कन्ना नाडिक
आड़ कड़क कन्ना नाडिक
भाई ये देना वो तालम्पी
ये देना वो तालम्पी
वो तालम्पी चड़ देव
देव तालम्पी चड़
तपिंच को गल्गा
तपिंच को गल्गा
What is that you know?
एंट दिलसा
Why they are so intelligent?
एंड को वाला अंता ज्ञान अंतलो
They are the only people who ate heavenly food on the earth
भूमि में डेट डूंड वाले वाले मात्रमे एक एक इंगा वार मात्रमे
इन्हीं देश अल उन्ना ये देश वोड कोडा परलोक बाहर मन्ना दिले देलो अक्कले देनार वांट बैठे
परलोक आहार वाले अक्कले देनार वाले वांट बैठे
अर्थवान हिंदा? Americans have not eaten manna
अमेरिका वाले मन्ना दिले
Russia people have not ate manna
रशिया वाले मन्ना दिले
India no, ours is ration rice
मारे इंडिया लो मंदर रेशन बीम
Ah, so we have not eaten manna
मन्ना दिले मन्ना
The only country in the whole world ate manna heavenly food for forty years
सर लोकलो चूसने लेट वो केवा के देश मो नालबे समस्या लो परलोक आहार मन्ना ने तिन वो केवा के देश मो
That is not earthly food
अधि बू समंदमे ना आहार
We have never touched the air
अधि भूमि ने पुरु ताकने ताकले
God is giving manna before that he sent the dew and upon the dew the manna was there
देव 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 देव
They never ate earthly food
वाले पुरु कोडा बू समंदमे ना आहार ना वाले तिन
Even the water they drank for forty years it is from the rock
वाले नालबे समस्या ताकने ट्वेंटी नील गोडा बनने नीचे नेट नीले
बोरले लेद वाले
वाले बोरले लेद
Not from wells
बाउल नीचे कादर नील दाग
Not from bore holes
ये का बोरलो नीचे नील गाद
From the rock that followed them
वाले वंबने नीचे नेट बंडलो नीचे नील दाग वाले
इनका डेवन को नोट निजमे अन्ना
अन्ना निजमे
माने ने तपिच
माने तपिच को गल्गा
But today when I think about it
नी देना नान्ना दारगुरी चाल चीज ना पड़
It is true
अधि सत्यमे
Not only the covenant made with Abraham is the reason
अब्राहम तो देव चेस निबंधन अधोकार अंत मात्रमे गाद
But even their food and water they are not from earth, they are both are from heaven
वाले तिन एट डूंड आहार गाने वाले ताके एट डूंड नील गाने भूमि नीचे नेट गाद अवें ने कोडा परलोक नीचे नेवे
Same genes are flowing in their children
वाले अधि जीन्स वाले पिल्लो लोग उन्ना
On the other day I was in America
वो के देना नान्ना अमेरिका लो उन्ना
And my daughter is having one friend, she is from Madras, a doctor
मामा इन्हीं वाले स्नेहत्रा लो काम इन्हीं आम डॉक्टर आम मद्रास नीचे
And she married a Jew
आनो के युद्ध ने वाहन जैस
They are having three, four children
वाले के दुर्मगर्व पिल्लो उन्ना मुगर्न नालगर्न उन्ना
And when I went there
नेन वाले दागर केल नपड़
They invited us for food
वाले बोजनान काहवानी
Because my daughter and this girl are some friends
एंड कंटे मामा या मामा वाले दुर्सनेत्र वाले
And मामा नातो उन्ने
मामा नातो निद
जून जैस्कुन्ने
वो के युद्ध ने वाहन जैस्कुन्ने
पिल्लो लो कोडा जूस जीन्स एवं चेसने
पिल्लो लो कोडा ये दुर्जीन्स एवं चेने
वाले माल बोजनान के बिलचेर
वाले माल बोजनान के बिलचेर
एल दामान
एल दामान
अरे युद्ध डोन इन्हीं तेन्टान के कमान के चलो अन्ना
सरे चलो जपने सन्ना नान्ना
I, when I went there
नेन अकड़ी केल नपड़
When I saw their intelligence
वाले एक के तेली तेटल जूस ना पड़
Six years old boy is there
आर समस्या वायस उन्ना पिल्लो वाड उन्ना अकड़
मंदगर आर समस्या लो इंटेड ओक्टा क्लास एद ओक्टा
आर समस्या लो इंटेड मंदगर ओक्टा क्लास जात नंतर
Isn't it?
अन्ना काद
Yeah, so six years boy
आर समस्या लो पिल्लो वाड
After talking to that family
अकुटमो तो मार्ट डिन्तर
And that boy is there
अब्बाई उन्ना
He is the eldest son in the family, six years
आर समस्या लो वायस अपिल्लो वाड कप एप्पे द वाड अकुटमो
He is sitting on the computer and typing
कंप्यूटर दगर कुछ टाइप जैस नाड
मन पिल्लो वार्ता
मन पिल्लो गोड वार्ता
Because they will take the cellphone, they will play some games and all these things
सेल फोन दीस कुन्ना गेम्स एवे द आर्ट नंतर
Then I casually asked that boy
नेन साझिंगन अब्बाई नाडिक नान्ना पिल्लो वाड
इल्ल नाडिक
नेन इल्ल नाडिक
ये द मार्ट डल कदा
ये द मार्ट डल कदा
पेटिन बोजनान के द रेमोल मार So
बोजनान के द रेमोल मार
हाँ मार्ट डपुज इधिकेल गोद हाँ इल्ल दायरो द ये द एक्सरसाइज चेयल कदा
ये द एक्सरसाइज
So, something I have to speak
ये द वो द मार्ट डल
So, इल्ल नान्ना नान्ना
इल्ल नान्ना
My son, what are you doing?
नाकुमार डान एंजेस्ट नाव
वाड चेपने जवाब इप्पुडिकी ना चेवला गिंगर वाड
वाड चेपने जवाब की पुडिकी ना चेवला गिंगर
Do you know what he said?
एंज एपड़ दिलसा
Six years old boy
आर समस्या लो वायस उन्ना पिल्लो वाड
Uncle, I am searching in the computer to which tribe I belongs to
वो अंकल नान्ना कंप्यूटर लो नान्ना ये गौतरण चेन्ना वाड नान्ना वेतु तो उन्ना
Six years old boy
आर समस्या लो पिल्लो वाड
कल्लु तिरिगनी
कल्लु तिरिगनी
At the age of six
आर समस्या लो वायस लो
Uncle, I am searching in the computer to which tribe either Ruben or Shemyon or which tribe I belongs to
नेन ये गौतरण चेन्ना वाड रुबेन और शिम्यन ये गौतरण चेन्ना वाड नान्ना ने तुतुन्ना नान्ना
That is the knowledge of Israelites
इसरैल एक के तेली तेटल नाट नाट
That is the knowledge of Israelites
इसरैल एक के तेली तेटल नाट नाट
Why?
एंड को
God told you are the chosen race
मेरे ये पच्चा बन्ने वंशम जपि देव जप
Now all those people they are being regathered
वालंद्र इप्पुर तिरी समकोच बढ़तुन्ना
Now what God told
इप्पुर देव देन जप
When we are seeing that, when the people of Israel are regathered, when the fig tree is blossoming, but is given it is having tender leaves, yes, his coming is near
एये क
Matthew twenty-four thirty-two
मत ऐसो वार्ता येरवेन नालगु मोपेरुन लो राइबन नेट वंत संगत इन्नट अंजूरो कोमल लेत द चिकरिंच ना पड़ मेरे एम नार्थन जैस्कुन्ना इसरैल प्रेसिडेंट तो कोडा सर लोकल नीचे तिरी समकोच बढ़तुन्ना आइन राखड़ समीपम आइन
My Lord is going to come very soon
नाप्रभु बात तोरे गा रान आइन
Before that seven years before he will take me away
ये द समस्या लो मुंद आइन नान्ना तिसके पत्थर
What about you?
नी माटेंटी
What about you?
नी माटेंटी
Are you still going to sit here or are you going to be caught up?
नु इनका इकड़े कुचन डलान कुन्ना नाव नु वेतु बड़ा नान कुन्ना
Not only that
अंत मात्रमे
One more greatest wonder
इनको का अद्भुत में नेट वंत
In the land of Israel
इसरैल देश म्लो
What the Lord said?
प्रभु एंज एपड़
A J K L twenty-three-sixth verse thirty
इज़क़ेलो मोपयार अध्यम मोपयावच मोपयावच नो अन्ने जनलो करून गोच्चन निंदा मेरी कनंदक इंडिनाटलो चेटलो पलमलनो भूमि पंतनो नेन
चेटलो फलाल ने निस्तान
चेटलो फलाल ने निस्तान
What does it mean?
दान अर्थमेंटी
I will revive the earth also
नेन भूमि ने कोडा माला सार वंत निका जैस्तान वाणी
Israel is a middle east country
इसरैल लो मध्याशय लो उन्ना देश
What does it mean?
दान अर्थमेंटी
Like your so-called Dubai or Kuwait or Qatar and like that only sand, nothing will grow there
चोडंडा एक सऊदी अरेबिया कतर कुवाइटी देश अल वाले अकड़ गोड़ इसके उन्तन अकड़ ये में चेटलो मालन गोड माल
Yeah, hundreds of kilometers
कुन्नी वंदल किलोमीटर
Only sand will be there
केवल इसके उन्तन
Even in Israel
इसरैल लो कोड चूस
For two thousand years not even a blade of grass has grown
चोडंडी रुड्डवेल समस्या लो वारको कनीस ओका गड्डी पास कोड मालो ले दकड़
Sand
इसका
But what God is telling?
देव देन जप
When I bring you back
नेन ममल तिरी समकोच ना पड़
I will give you the fruit of that land
नेन एक चेटलो फलाल ने स्तान बूम पंतन निस्तान
What does it mean?
दान अर्थमेंटी
When you sow the seed, once again plants will grow
मेरो इतना लो वित्त नाडु मालोक सर चेटलो मलस्ताई
Exactly what has happened
निजिंगा एंज जरिंद
In nineteen forty-eight
पत्तोल नालबे
When they got independence
वाले की स्वांद्र मच्छन
The first Prime Minister David Ben-Gurion
डेविड बेनगुरियन मट्टम वाटी प्रधानमंत्री
He called the best agricultural scientist of the world, his name is Mark Twain
Mark Twain ने ट्रांसप्रेस प्रक्षाय अधिकांश ना व्यवसाय सेस्ट्रा वेतन बिलच
And sir, Mark Twain sir
Mark Twain गार
Please test our soil
माय का भूमि ने सारा ने मेरे परीक्षण
Other potassium is there
पोटाशियम उन्दा ले
Other nitrogen is there
नात्रजन उन्दा ले
Our water is there
ये उन्दा सल
What seeds we can sow
ये वित्त नाडु में एच चू
He called my, I told you, once again I am challenging
मरक्सर मिक्स वाल विच चप्तन
Whatever I am telling with names I am telling, you can check anywhere in the internet
नेन चप्तन नेट एंड पेरिल तो साहब मेरे अकड़े ने सारे इंटरनेट लोग तो मेरे
Not even one percent cooked up story
वक्का कनीस वक्का सातं कोड कल्पित कथल काने काद
Why?
एंड को दिलसा
My Bible never require a cooked up story
एंड कंटे ना बाइबिल की कल्पिंच नेट वंत कथल आवस्थन ले
Because it is the word of God
एंड कंटे देव वाच्य
The Prime Minister called Mark Twain
Mark Twain गार ने प्रधानमंत्री बिलच
You take, you take the soil from different areas
वेर वेर सालालो नीचे मे भूमि ने मेरे सेकरेंच
You take to your laboratory and test what minerals are there, what chemicals are there
मे लाबक मेरे तिसके ले एवे मिनरल्स उन्ना एवे केमिकल्स उन्ना मेरे परीक्षण चंद
What plants we can plant there?
ये ट्वेंटी मक्कल में नाट चुच चप्पन
Mark Twain has taken, taken that soil
आय का भूमि मटिन आई तिसको नेल डू मार्क ट्वाइन
He tested in his laboratory
आइन लावलो मत्तो टेस्ट चेस सुस
And he brought back with the report
आर रिपोर्ट दीस को नच्च
And he told David Ben-Gurion, the first Prime Minister of Israel
इसरैल मट्टम वाटी प्रधानमंत्री डेविड बेनगुरियन की जपड़
Grass also will not grow, sir
अया कनीस गड्डी गोड मालो द यान्ना
Nothing is there
ये मे ले दासल अकड़
Then David Ben-Gurion, he is a Jew
डेविड बेनगुरियन आइन युद्ध
He is an Israelite
आइन इसरैल युद्ध
With a broad smile, he said
आइन बिग्गर गन्न आइन अन्ना
You do not know the scriptures
निक लेकन नाल देली
You do not know the prophecies of our forefathers
मा पित्रो एक प्रावचन नाल निक तेली
You can go away, thank you
Thank you, मेरे लिपो चंद
And he called the farmers in Israel
इसरैल लो उन्हीं व्यवसाय दार्ल बिलच
You go
मेरे लंडी
Put, put that seed
मेरे ले वित्त नाडु एंडी
Let us pray
तरवत प्रार्थना जद्द
Today
इधिनो
The best fruits in the world, they are from Israel
सृष्टमेंट फलाल इसरैल देश में चौस्तन
Why?
एंड को दिलसा
Who gave that strength to that soil?
ये रा भूमि की बलमच्छा
Before my coming, I will once again revive the soil also
नेन नारा कड़क कंटे मुंद भूमि के मालोक सार नान्ना सार निस्तान
Today
इधिनो
Agricultural technology, Israel is number one in the world
चोडंडी व्यवसाय सेस्ट्रा परिज्ञान लो चूसते इसरैल देश नंबर वन रैंक
Even in India
इंडिया लो कोड
The drip irrigation, what we are using
मानो ओपे इन चेट
It means drop by drop, drop by drop
बिंद सेद्यम
If you go to the fields where palm oil trees are there
पाम आई चेटलो इवन उन्तन कदा अकड़ केल मेरे चूस
And drip, drop by drop, drop by drop, the water will be
अकड़ा नील चुकल चुकल गा बिंद लाग पड़तु पड़तु नाट
The drip irrigation
आय का बिंद सेद्यम
And sprinkler irrigation
तुम्पर सेद्यम
They are the imported technology from Israel
इसरैल देश में नीचे दिगमत चेस कुन्ना टेक्नोलॉजी
Today, much technology is imported, agricultural technology from Israel
इसरैल देश में नीचे व्यवसाय टेक्नोलॉजी ने मानो दिगमत चेस कुन्ना
What is the size of Israel?
इसरैल परिमाण में
One and a half district size
ओकी नार जिला साइज अंत
In our country, there are nearly six hundred districts are there
मारा देश लो दूस्ते दादा पार वंदल जिला लो नाई
But we are importing that technology
माने एंज एस नान्ना टा टेक्नोलॉजी ने दिगमत चेस कुन्ना
Mister Narendra Modi, our, our Prime Minister, three and a half years ago, he visited Israel
माना प्रधानमंत्री नरेंद्र मोदी गार मुड़नार समस्या लो क्रितम इसरैल दर्शिंच
And he brought that technology
आ टेक्नोलॉजी ने दीस कोच
Used in Gujarat
गुजरात लो ओपे इन चाद
Then he, he wrote a letter
अपड़ा आइन वो कुत्रो रास
He spoke on phone also
आइन फोन लो गोड मार्ट डड
Sir
अया
Yesterday, in, in the past, we were getting some twenty bags per acre in our states
मा रास्तो लो मे मो एक अकरा की येरवेन बस्ताल माकु दिगमत वच्च
After using your technology, we are getting eighty to hundred bags from one acre
इप्प मे एक टेक्नोलॉजी ना वाड इन तरो दो एक अकरा की येरवेन नीचे नूर बस्ताल उस्तन
Four to five times
नालगनी चाइधु रेटलो
Why?
एंड को
The Lord said
प्रभु अन्ना
I will bless you
नेन निन आस्तर दिस
I will make you a blessing
नेन निन अनेको का सीरवा द करंगा जैस्तान
The whole world is blessed by Israel
सर लोकंगोड़ इसरैल नीचा सीरवा दिस
Today we are eating tomato
इधिनान मान टमाटर देन
Invented by Israelites
इसरैल गन्पटिंदी
First prizes
मंदर ची बहमान
Many Nobel prizes
अनेक में नेट वंती नोबेल बहमत
Now you, I am, you can see the history
मेरे ले चरित्र चोडंडी मेरे
Now wonderful fruits
अद्भुत में नेट वंत फलाल
नी क्लाग नाकला पोछकाई दिन
नी क्लाग नाकला पोछकाई दिन
मा गुरु गर पोछकाई दिन नाला पोछकाई ले आइन नाद कोड अलग आउट उन्दे नाद तोर पूज So, God has given wonderful fruits to them
देव देव वार का अद्भुत में नेट वंत फलाल इच्छ
Not everything
अन्ने समस्त मग
Five important fruits God has given which are sufficient for human health
मानो आरोग्य कौश्चन में नेट वंत आई द प्रामुख्य में नेट वंत फलाल
Pom, pomgranate
दानी मलो
Fix
ये कंजरो पंडलो
Dates
करजुरालो
And grapes
द्राक्षलो
And fifthly, olives
ओलिव पंडल
Your heart problems
नी गुंड समस्या
Your blood problems
नी रक्त समस्या
Your fat problems
नी कोन्ना ट्वेंटी को आ समस्या
All these things will can be addressed by these five fruits
ये आई द फलाल दिन तेसली वन्ने गोडा भाग इप्पत
Ah, tagutai
Tagutai
Of course, with all these things, also one day we are going to die
ये वन्ने उन्ना पड़ कोड वकान अब दिनान मान मर
Without this, it is also natural, natural old age will come
मानक रोगा लेमेल आक्पेर ना साझिंगन रोधा पे मच्छ चनपत
That's why in Israel, that many number of heart attacks will not be there
अंदके इसरैल देश में लो अंत एक वायका गुंड पोटली उन्ना
The fruits like olives
ओलिव पंडल
The fruits like black grapes
नाला द्राक्षल
They will take care of your cholesterol
ये कोलेस्ट्रॉल ने अद्भुत उस्ता ये रंडू गोरा
गॉड हैज गिवेन डेस्ट फ्रूट्स तू देम
देवड़ा फलाल ने वारक इच्छा
दे आर एक्सपोर्टिंग देम
वार ने वार वाटन एगमत जैस्ट नार
ओह टेक्नोलॉजी
टेक्नोलॉजी
योर सेल फोन चिप इस इन्वेंटेड बाय देम
नी वार तुन्ना टोड सेल फोन चिप कन्गुन ने वाले
चिप इन योर कंप्यूटर इस इन्वेंटेड बाय देम
नी कंप्यूटर लो ने चिप कन्गुन ने वाले
व्हाई
इनको
गॉड सेड
देवड़ी जपड़
इन दिस 60 70 ईयर्स दे होव डैन सो मेनी इन्वेंशन
ये 20 डब्बे सांस्त्रल ना नेक में नेटवर्क परिषद जस्कोस संस्था गणपत
इन आंद्रा असेंबली देर वाज डी ग्रेट डिस्कशन ऑन पेगासिस सॉफ्टवेयर